City Council Work Session for October 29, 2024, call order. All right. Garrett, are you gonna run through something?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
That's all right. Okay, thank you. Well, um, I was thinking that perhaps I'd start by just saying that, uh, this reminder that we're, at this point, we're working off of the ordinance 942 that was presented at the October 2nd City Council meeting. And we haven't edited that yet in response to initial feedback that we got in that meeting or in other conversations since then. So, when we're talking together tonight, I think the idea is we're looking at ordinance 942 that was presented October 2nd and the, the red line and yellow highlighted version that, uh, was also there on October 2nd. Um, I was thinking I'd just list, list out, um, the topics that we heard you identify in that meeting and in conversations since that you, that we think you want to talk about more. So that we sort of have that as sort of an agenda of topics that we want to cover. Uh, and if you guys want to identify other topics that we want to make sure, to try to leave time for, um, maybe we could identify those upfront. Um, does that sound like an all right approach before we dig into individual issues?
So Chad, is he, is he talking about what you just gave us, copy that you just gave us? Just want to be clear.
Yeah, no, good. I'm glad you asked. Yes.
Okay. So, potential topics of discussion, or I would say default topics of discussion, we want to make sure we have time to work through are the minimum tree replacement size for instances when tree replacement is required as a condition of permit approval. Editing the invasive species exemption so that it properly refers to a list that includes the trees you want exempted from having to get a permit and moving that exemption from the definition of tree to the exemption section. So it's both sort of the content and where it's located. That's a second topic. A third topic is who makes decisions on major tree removal permits? Planning Commission or City Council wanted to talk about that. And then there might have been questions, I'm not as sure about this, but there might have been questions or an interest in discussing further, tree care specialists, the role of tree care specialists or arborists in the ordinance. But this was a pretty limited set of topics that we had heard coming into the meeting as far as I know. That being said, if there's more that you want to talk about, by all means. We're happy to do that. Is there anything else? Did that list sound in touch with?
Well, it was, it was close. There were still a few things I'll all add in once we get into it. You weren't here, so I did bring up some things that were specific to questions that I needed to ask you.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm not going to interfere though. I'm gonna let you do what you need to do and then I'll, and it's my turn. I'll go.
Okay. All right. Well, in that case, if it's all right with y'all, we'll start with minimum tree replacement sizes. So, when a major tree removal permit is required, the decision to approve the permit, if it's approved, um, can come along with conditions. In not all cases will replacement trees be required, but the Planning Commission or City Council, whoever makes this decision on a permit, can require that the applicant um, plant trees as a condition of permit approval. And we currently have in the draft ordinance a requirement that trees be a minimum of three inches in diameter. And y'all had identified that that's uh, not practical and too large of a measurement. And, uh, one suggestion was that minimum tree replacement sizes should be uh, as, should be as follows. For evergreen trees, uh, five feet tall and for deciduous trees, 10 gallon size. And so if you'd like to discuss that more or have other ideas on how to address the fact that a three inch tree replacement size is impractical, we could talk about that now. But, uh, the suggestion for five foot tall evergreens and 10 gallon deciduous trees um, seemed reasonable to us.
I believe we already talked about that and I believe we came to consensus as far as reducing the size instead of three inches. But correct me if I'm wrong, does anyone have a different remembrance about that?
No, I, I don't have an objection because this is just a, this is a may, this isn't a half, this isn't a shall. This is if, if it's deemed appropriate for a replacement tree. And I would hope that through the course of this, if somebody were to be required to do this, if they could come back and show, look, I've made, you know, I've done due diligence, I made a reasonable attempt to locate this and it's just not a feasible thing, then the city would somehow work with them. And there would be a reasonable, responsible city, I would hope. So I, I have no objection as long as, you know, we're gonna, we intend to proceed with a reasonable.
Yeah, if, if this requirement, you know, for a five foot tall evergreen or 10 gallon deciduous size, deciduous trees is there in the ordinance for anyone to see going into their major tree removal permit hearing, um, they could identify upfront in that hearing that this is not practical and that would be an appropriate place for, uh, the Planning Commission or City Council, whoever's conducting the hearing to, to also give them, uh, some flexibility on that.
So Garrett, that's, uh, number four A under requirements D, right?
Um, let me just double check. That is, yes, D requirements, uh, subsection four, which lists the different kinds of conditions that can be placed on a major tree removal permit.
Okay, and under requirements three, I've got, uh, the Planning Commission may grant or deny a request and not the City Council. Because that gives them the right to say yea or nay, and then a person has the right to appeal to the City Council. I believe we came to that decision also at the last meeting. So.
I think, I think we also added in there that, there, the, the Planning Commission will be a public hearing.
Okay. Just making a note there, we'll make that change.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, we've just worked through two of the.
I have to either ask for the bathroom or he has something he wants to say right now.
I've got a real question here, okay? So I own a lot on Second and, Second Street in Deer Park. And it's, it's got old road spruce trees on it. I've been paying taxes on the lot forever. Okay, I want to develop and build a house for my, for myself and my children. What gives the city the right to tell me that I can't clear cut my lot in order to be able to develop?
So, and, you know, Phil, I, I won't try to answer philosophically in terms of like the, the role of local government, but I will say that the ordinance that you currently have and draft ordinance 942 basically gives you free rein to remove trees that are, um, within the building footprint, uh, the driveway footprint or, you know, nearby those things so that you can reasonably remove them and not have them uh, damage your home, damage your driveway, damage your septic system. Like, no permit, no separate permit is required. Um, you submit a, a building permit application uh, that shows where you want to put all of these things on your property, um, and you're allowed to remove the trees that you need to remove to do that.
So the septic, I mean, so that covers, that covers the, the septic system and the replacement field, correct?
It's not, it, the, the ordinance doesn't specifically say that, uh, you can cut over the replacement field, but, um, and, and maybe it, perhaps it should. That's not something that I would split hairs with, as the planner, that I would, you know, split hairs with a developer on, um, with a building permit application, but perhaps someone in the future would. So if you, if you'd like to, you know, be more specific with that, we can be.
The way I think it would work is, is, and Garrett's right, it doesn't specifically say in advantage you can cut the riparian area out. But if you needed to change your septic system over to the riparian area, that the permit to do so would be all administrative. It wouldn't go through a large process with the Planning Commission, with the City Council. Because you would come to us and say, I need to make a repair, I need to use the riparian area. There would be a building permit and land use compatibility form, and then we would sign off on that, allowing you to cut those trees.
I don't have to go to the bathroom. Except, there is no exception for the 55 inch or heritage trees. Is that my, that's my understanding. Is that correct?
Um.
Those trees are going to be protected under all circumstances.
And while you're looking, I have the question of the Riparian Act is protected, or the riparian areas, it would have to be the septic secondary septic site, which would not be in the riparian area since that is protected.
Right, that's gonna be protected anywhere.
So that's a misstatement using that as where you're gonna cut or put your replacement field.
Right.
Just to throw one more thing in there, Garrett.
That's right. Yeah, the, the replacement septic field should not be in, within the rip, the 50 foot riparian buffer anyway.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just trying to verify the answer to the last question there. Um, okay, I think this is a, this is a decision for y'all to make. So currently, section C applicability is where, um, we state that the, you know, tree removal permits are required except where, um, tree removal is needed in order to construct proposed improvements, including the placement of structures onsite sewage disposal facilities, accessways, utilities, and essential grade changes. I read this and think that this exempts, uh, heritage trees and 55 inch trees as well. Um, and that those can be removed uh, without, uh, a tree removal permit, um, in, in these construction circumstances. Uh, but perhaps you'd like to be more specific, or maybe that, that wasn't your intention. So, let's hear from you about it.
Okay.
And then, I think if Peter were here, I, I will, I don't want to speak for him, but channeling sort of Peter's perspective would be that, um, we need to, uh, especially in the case of housing, um, not require a discretionary public hearing land use kind of approval regarding tree removals when housing is being constructed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're talking the initial plot plan that you come to the building inspector and you've got your areas of improvements and grading, and that's when everything's decided. And if it includes a heritage tree, then that is what's gonna happen if the house is gonna be sitting right where it is.
Yeah, and they, they, they get to just remove it. Uh, they're supposed to identify it on the site plan and say that they're gonna remove it, um, and identify the location of the house. And that decision gets made, uh, there's not a formal permit. It's, um, you know, the building team, Leonard and Angelina, will, they send me building permit applications and I review, I review them for consistency with the zoning ordinance, even when a variance or a continual use permit is not required, for example. And I'll review it and, um, sometimes I'll identify issues, if there are issues with the zoning ordinance in writing and send that back to the applicant. Um, and sometimes if there's a, a, a potentially like sticky policy question or, or something that I think a planner in five years would want to know about, or that a member of the public would question the permit decision, I'll put it in writing that, hey, yeah, there's a heritage, I would put in writing that, you know, there's a heritage tree here, but removal of that, uh, doesn't require a permit because our ordinance exempts it and it's this section that says so, you know, and then we.
Okay.
Yeah. And then it's, it's just a building permit though, and they, you know, they do what they, they do. There's no tree removal permit.
Right. Thank you, Garrett.
You're welcome.
Garrett, before we move on from C where we were talking about applicability, a lot of consonants to say. Um, so this, I, and I'm interjecting because we're kind of on the same topic. Um, under number one, where it says, in order to construct proposed improvements, including the placement of structures and blah, 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 blah. Um, would anybody object to including in there, um, the words repair or protect? Onsite sewage disposal facilities, accessways or whatever, because there are times when, for example, I gave the example in the meeting, I bought a house that had a tree that was planted much too close to my, to my septic.
Field.
Yeah, to my septic field. So would anybody object to it under number one, including the, you know, when a tree needs to be removed in order to repair or protect? Uh, and I'll give you another example. There's a woman in town who's very upset because her neighbor has planted a willow tree next to her very expensive septic system and she has fear that she's going to end up in some, you know, doing some repairs due to no fault of her own. Were she ever to get a neighbor who would be, who would want to remove that tree, who wouldn't want that tree necessarily being protected or prevent her from easily removing it?
Does line F, number two, allude to that? I want her to clear, it's on page three, exceptions.
Well, okay, so, yeah, these.
Yeah, as you currently have it, you know, for an emergent, in, in an emergency or like, you know, an imminent repair that's required, yeah, permit's not required, um, there's also the idea that I think that the ordinance represents that, um, you know, there's, there's always some opportunity and it's always gonna be a reality for people to potentially abuse the leeway that's, that's given by the ordinance. And they could say that, you know, a tree that's 50 feet away from the septic system is posing a hazard to it when it's really not. And so, you know, they, they just go ahead and remove it and say that, that was and the app, you know, the, the property owner says, that was exempt from your zoning code because, uh, you know, it was, it was posing a hazard to my septic system, so I removed it. Um, and the ordinance right now would, it's set up so that it's like, yeah, you know, if it's not an imminent threat, you come in and get a permit for it and, and show, and show why it's threatening your septic system or, you know, show why in five years it would, and it makes sense for you to remove it now, and you get a permit for that, you know.
Okay, I think you answered my question. I just wanted to make sure that I got it on the record that it was discussed by the intent clause.
Yeah.
So, so, uh, under C applicability, uh, the whole purpose of what was sent to us from the Planning Commission was for the city to be able to keep track of what trees are being removed. And we don't have, that lets out any tree that's in any kind of a building, repair, septic, blah, blah, blah type of situation. We're not keeping track of those trees and that's not what was sent to us from the Planning Commission. So I have a problem with not being able to keep track of that.
Yeah, if you all would like, um, these exemptions could be sort of reworded to be, uh, a situation where a minor tree removal permit is required. And again, for a minor tree, minor tree removal permit, um, there is no criteria by which the city can deny those. Like, you apply for it and the permit is given. Um, is the idea. So if, that, and that, that was the Planning Commission's intent and we have, you know, the more exemptions, we add, the, I guess the further away from that intent we get. It's also just up to you all to decide what the ultimate intent is. You're the, you know, you're the City Council, but. It would be pretty straightforward to just require a minor tree removal permit for these things. And in any case where there's an, an emergency, an imminent hazard, it's like, yeah, you, you come in and we could make it so it's like, you, you come in and get the permit sometime afterwards, um, a- after you, after you correct the hazard. Would you like it that way?
Yeah, a minor tree removal, that'll work?
Yeah, it's the system. You fill it out along with the building permit, have a go with it, put it into the system, track the number.
Thank you. While we're on C, under number two, I, I realize that you've added in the airport overlay in other places, but, um, would it also be appropriate to add it under number two?
Um, so the airport hazard overlay.
The airport overlay has its own rules about trees and what height they can reach, yada, yada, yada. We have a bad hair. It, it is elsewhere.
Yeah.
So you're.
Would you all?
Have to search for it.
So wait, Garrett, that's under F, number three, it talks about airport hazard overlay.
Right, yeah. Would you all be amenable to us combining section F exemptions and section C applicability into a single section C applicability where all of these things are listed together?
Yes, I, yeah, I think it would, it would be easier to navigate.
Okay.
If it's all together.
And then we would also move any, anything we decide on related to invasive, exempt invasive or noxious species would, would also go there instead of in the definition. If that makes sense.
Great idea. Next.
Yeah, I'm just reviewing my list. I might only have one more. Um.
Go team.
Okay, and this is on invasive species that are exempt from getting a permit. I think this is a unique case where we wouldn't, we're, the idea is we're not, we're, we're not even trying to require a minor tree removal permit for removing invasive species, right? So Siberian elm, for example, is one that's come up. Uh, if you'd like, we could make that, that and other invasive species completely exempt from any permitting. Uh, would be sort of the default position unless you say otherwise. And then I think the real issue we've had is identifying a list that represents the kinds of trees we want to exempt from permits. And we started with a list of four tree names that were identified in meetings, uh, that you or the Planning Commission had. And, uh, the feedback was, that we got was, let's, let's refer to the Oregon Department of Agriculture's noxious, uh, noxious weeds list. Um, so we did that, but we, we looked into the, the list and it, it actually doesn't include most of these like tree-like species or shrubby tree-like species. Um, so if you want to exempt uh, English holly or Siberian elm, like that's not included in the Department of Agriculture's list. And so we either have to name those tree names or use a different list. And we did find a list of sorts, uh, and we put it in the memo for the meeting. It is, um, Oregon State University Extension's Solve Pest Problems website, um, that includes uh, a more expansive list of invasive trees. So.
Can you say that again?
Yeah, Oregon State University Extension, Solve Pest Problems webpage. So the issue I have with this, and the more I thought about it, is that this program from Oregon State University and this webpage is really intended to be like a public education list more than one to refer to from like a regulatory perspective. I don't have a whole lot of faith that the website URL won't change in the next couple of years, that they won't change the name of the webpage. It won't necessarily be Solve Pest Problems anymore. Um, or that they'll even maintain the list. And so, you know, I'm starting to lean towards like, if there's tree species that you really want exempted, it might be beneficial to, to at least name a few of those if they're priorities and, and name them in the ordinance. Uh, in addition to also referring to the USDA, uh, noxious weeds list. But, um, so we'd be going back to like English holly, uh, laurel, Siberian elm, um, and you could always add more or remove them, uh, through an ordinance update, but.
Was, was that one of the tree I had?
We don't have one.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, they don't really grow. Yeah, yeah. That was, that was in our, one of our prior drafts, but yeah, they don't really grow out there.
And then laurel is cherry laurel, not just English laurel or Italian laurel?
Yeah, we'd, we'd call it, yeah, it's cherry laurel from the research I've done, is what we'd be interested in naming, yes.
So I, I think the way that this would work is, is that they had a cherry laurel and they decided to cut it down, there wouldn't be any tree removal permitting requirements. We wouldn't even monitor that that tree was even removed or keep it into our database.
Correct.
I mean, I don't think there's that many of those trees around here, quite honestly. And they would have had to, most likely, had an arborist come in and say, well, that's a blah de blah and it's an invasive species. I mean, I'm guessing. He's definitely writing it on their phone or something.
That didn't address the, though, the, that list didn't address the plants that are identified um, by different state organizations, including universities as being, um, a danger to septic systems and, and trees that you wouldn't necessarily want to have planted in close proximity to septic systems. Which could be a health hazard for us. So those would be like the willow, the poplar, the maple, birch, the elm, the aspen, eucalyptus, oak, black walnut. I mean, there's a lot.
And those are all, um, you can find those all on Oregon.gov. Website has a list that they actually have a list of trees that are a danger to septic systems. So I would think that we would not want to necessarily protect, write a, write a law that would protect a tree that can be a danger to a septic system in a city with septic systems, but that's just my thinking.
If, if you guys want to talk about that more, I mean, I'd think about it perhaps in terms of uh, if, if you want to have a list of trees where like there's invasive and noxious species that we don't want to permit at all. Uh, or we don't want to require a permit for at all. There's other trees that are, they're probably valued by the public in some ways, as long as they're not next to a septic system. There, it could be, you know, valuable parts of the, of the city's trees. Um, and so perhaps there's a list of trees that, um, could be permitted through a minor permit. Uh, it'd be a minor tree removal permit, um, if they're within a certain distance of a septic or replacement septic system. Would maybe be the way I'd think about that. But they're not really in the same category as an invasive or noxious species. It, it doesn't seem like.
Well, the, the tree roots are going to go wherever the water is. So every tree that you plant close to a septic field, okay, is, is an invasive species.
Right. Yeah. So you're saying maybe having a specific list isn't helpful?
No.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we're on sand for, for the most part here and the roots are going to find water. And they're going to go to, they're going to go to the closest thing that they can to get water and that's, that's your septic field. So unlike Canaan Beach that has sewers or seaside that has sewers, we don't. And this is a big issue. And it costs $22,000 to replace a septic field in today's market.
And it's a serious health concern if something ruptures through septic.
So I, I mean, the, the homeowner or the property owner or something like that, and, and whoever the landscaper is, they need to understand that if they're going to, if they're going to plant bushes or shrubs or laurel or whatever it is on, on the property, you know, um, tahatas or you know, or, or any type of cedar or anything like that, those things are going to get their water from wherever they can. That's the big issue that I have with this tree over there.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of situations where it's like someone, let's say they buy a house or they inherit a house and the prior owner had allowed trees to grow to us, you know, a size that would be protected by the ordinance, right? And they want to be responsible about their septic system and protect it by by removing the trees. Um, but they have to go through a hearing process to do that because there's more than, there's like, there's three of them or, you know, there's four of them. And they're just trying to, I think it's a, it's a basic responsible thing to do. So I'm trying to think of what a solution to that would be.
Yeah. Wouldn't that be under protecting your septic system? And don't we have a exception in there for that?
Says a tree, heritage tree or 55 inch tree posing a safety hazard, dangerous condition, or risk to an existing septic system may be removed without first obtaining a permit.
What I don't understand, we have this in the tree words. It's already in there.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. We, yeah, we had, we had discussed that, I guess, and made that, made, you know, we could, I think in a couple of rounds, made the, uh, made the exception more and more permissive uh, of editing. So maybe that takes care of it. Safety hazard or a dangerous condition. I mean, we could, I, I think under F exceptions, number one, a, a tree, heritage tree or 55 inch tree posing a safety hazard or dangerous condition may be removed without first obtaining a permit. And then there's the emergency repair exemption below that, but maybe, maybe the idea is that even if it's not an emergency, may, maybe we should name like in F exception, sub item one, when it's a safety hazard, a dangerous condition, or poses a threat to a septic system, you can remove the tree without first obtaining a permit, except based on our prior discussion, uh, you know, from here on out, it would be a minor tree removal permit, but just, you know, issued over the counter. Uh, with, it would never be denied.
Maybe there's a new clause. So we, we have a heritage tree, tree or 55 inch tree posing a safety hazard, dangerous condition, or risk to an existing septic system may be removed without first obtaining a permit. Uh, changing that. So new clause maybe to add for a septic system protection. A tree identified as posing a direct risk to the structural integrity or functioning of an existing septic system may be removed after a verification process by a qualified arborist or septic system professional.
That still doesn't let the city know what trees are being removed.
Then maybe residents may proceed with removal on submission of documentation of the city within 10 days of removal. Stop on the day that it is supposed, septic root intrusion or damage. And then we would be aware of that tree being.
If I'm a property owner and there's a tree that's entering my septic field, are you telling me I'm going to have to pay $3,500 to $4,000 to have me, me come down there and tell me that the tree's encroaching upon my septic field before I can remove it?
What would the alternative be? Would it be that you could just go ahead and remove the tree because you believe it's a septic or if, if it's going to encroach on your septic system?
Well, currently you can.
And the city would allow it?
Currently you can, and we're talking about a change. We're talking about taking away that right and responsibility from the owner. So it's a valid question.
You know, I don't think, I don't think the city has any any business in protecting, you know, in making me pay somebody else to tell me that the, what it is that I already know that, that that the tree roots are encroaching upon my septic before I can remove it. My chainsaw's coming out and it's gone.
And it's in there, they're going to do that.
But the way that it is, the deal, I've got to get an arborist to, you know, pay an arborist to come down and tell me exactly what it is that I know.
No, you don't. It's under exceptions. I don't, I don't understand this discussion. It's under exceptions.
But that's why, yeah, that's why we just need to make it clear.
Let him ask his questions, please.
I'm letting him ask his question. I did not interrupt him and you don't, you didn't tell me what to do, Deanna.
Okay, look. This is not necessary to get this way. We're both talking about the same thing, but understanding it differently. There is an exception. You can cut the tree down. All you have to do is go to the city and tell them that you did that. Get a minor tree permit, which doesn't cost anything. It just allows the city to track the trees. That's what we're talking about is tracking trees. Maybe I need to explain that differently. You understand what the tracking of trees is about?
I understand the tracking of trees. I got a lot of trees on my property.
Yeah, I'm sure you do. Right? Ladies, we don't have to be this way with each other. Okay? It doesn't, you don't have to tell someone to let them answer the quest or ask their question when they've asked a question. You don't have to be short and snitty about you've already done that. They've already asked it. Okay? I'd like to move along. Is there anything else, Garrett?
No, nothing from my list.
Nothing from your list. Does anyone else have anything on their list?
So I'm, I'm wondering, Garrett, if we need to put something in here about tree care and the public right of way.
In terms of specifying, uh, who's responsible or for tree care?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we can do that.
Would this work on the right of way as well? But the city would be the applicant?
No, we don't want to take that responsibility. We want to oversee it and make the owner of the property. Because it goes all the way out to the center of the street is what everyone was saying when it came to Don Frank's property. He's supposed to be responsible for all the maintenance all the way to the center of the street.
Yeah.
So if that means the right of way and the trees, then it should be the owner of the property. They come to the city, they say, this is what the issue is. And then we work it out with them through this.
Right, right. Do we want a sentence somewhere in here about that? Is my question.
Yes, we could do that. And I think Peter had encouraged that discussion a while back and it, I'm not sure it ever really got resolved, but, um, we would state, trying to think where it would go. Um, probably under applicability. It's not an exception, but it's regarding how this ordinance is applicable. Um, or it could have its own sort of lettered heading, but can I confirm with you all that the goal is to make it clear to the public that, um, when they want to remove a tree that's in the public right of way, they're required to get a permit, just like when they want to remove a tree from their property. That's one thing. And two, do you want the ordinance to say that that maintenance of those trees is their responsibility?
I don't want to put it all on the owner, but I don't want the city to end up going, we've got 20 applications and they all want the trees trimmed, pruned and you know, made to look prettier. I, you know, and that, that's what we would be opening ourselves up to if we I don't know how you would word it, Garrett. As a planner.
Well, I, and that would be something I'm, I'd be checking in with Peter on as well to, to word that in particular. Yeah.
Okay. Well, then I think you should because Peter is the one who brought that up at the meeting about the five trees that Don Franks and how everyone's to the middle of the road as far as maintenance is concerned.
Okay.
The, the whole thing is, is that the property owner owns to the edge of his property. And then the, and then the, then the utility right of way and street right of way and everything else is the city's, is the city's property. So if a homeowner wants to plant trees on the city's property and plant them over the, say the water line, whose responsibility is that when the tree blows over and rips the water line? I mean, I don't think the property owner should be able to plant anything on city property.
I was not saying that they could plant on the city property. They have to maintain the vegetation in front of their property, adjacent to the property line, to the center of the street, if there's vegetation to that point. Because we already know, and you can drive down any street and you can see people have already planted to the edge of the road when it's a 60 foot right of way. So they've already done their basic infringement, if you will. So they must maintain that. Is my feeling. And I, I would check with Peter because again, he was adamant about that when he was talking about Don Frank and how it goes to the middle of the road.
Yeah. And when it, when it comes to prevent, preventing owners from planting in the right of way, that, that's a legitimate, you know, city and public concern. Um, I would say it's like a whole nother topic that, um, I would encourage us to take up as, as like a separate ordinance. Um, if, if it's something that we really want to get into, but it could, it could have a place here as well. I mean, this, this the section of the ordinance is about tree removal and regulating tree removal. Uh, rather than, it's, it's, uh, it might even be appropriate in, in another section of the city code regarding public spaces and rights of way and public infrastructure.
There, there, there might be a framework for a shared responsibility. Like trees located within the public right of way are not routinely maintained by the city of Gerhardt. However, the city encourages adjacent property owners to report hazardous conditions to ensure public safety. Maintenance or removal may be initiated by either property owner or the city, depending on the situation. And then have a, a process to where property owners may request removal of pruning of right of way trees through a minor or major tree removal permit process. Immediate dangers already established, we can take care of that. And then the city doesn't assume routine care or liability for the right of way trees. And we're not pushing it on the residents either. So it might be a, just that framework. That trees are located within the public right of way are not routinely maintained by the city of Gerhardt. However, the city encourages adjacent property owners to report hazardous conditions to ensure public safety. Maintenance or removal may be initiated by either property owner or the city, depending on the situation through this process.
But, okay, let's, but put in there some type of caveat that the discussion needs to be held ahead of time between the property owner and the city.
Okay. So the idea for that would be adjacent property owners may request removal or pruning of right of way trees through a minor or major tree removal permit process.
A minor tree, a minor tree removal does not require.
No, but because it's defined being in no man's land, that, that process would at least enable us to have the conversation.
After the fact though.
Uh, in an emergency, we can do it. But if they wanted to remove the trees, they would have to come to us first.
Well, particularly if it's on a city ground.
Yeah, but my recollection was that we didn't want to invite property owners to go and get an arborist or a tree care specialist to document that there's any number of non-inminent, but still documentable hazards. Bring those to the city's attention and say, look, city, now I've documented there's some kind of hazard here, even if it doesn't seem like it's too imminent of an issue. Um, we've brought this to your attention. Now please remove the hazard. And the city feels like it's in a position where it has to do that every single time. It's, it's common in other jurisdictions where it's like trees that are in the right of way are the responsibility of the owner. Now, it, I, it, I think it could make sense for the city to like reserve the right to correct a hazard in the right of way. But send the message that trees are the responsibility of the, the adjacent owner when they're in the right of way and, and they need to address those hazards.
Do you think it should be in this ordinance or it should be in its own separate?
I think that it, uh, that stating that a tree removal permit for tree removals in the right of way is appropriate for this ordinance. And it's a little bit of an awkward fit, but I think it would also be okay to signal here that it is the responsibility of the owner to maintain those trees and correct hazards in that area and that the city reserves the right to do so too.
So we could use, uh, F, the vacant letter and put it in right there as a filler?
Yeah, I think so. And I'll, I'll verify with. Yeah, I think so. And I'll I'll verify with Peter on all this and and Chad, but. But. I, yeah, and then we wouldn't be going into the realm of, um. Prohibiting. Certain, you know, planting within, you know, X feet of this type of infrastructure and Y feet of that kind of infrastructure. In the, in this ordinance, that'd be a sort of a, a separate effort if you all want to delve into that.
Okay. That sounds good to me. I don't know about anybody else. Fine. Any, anyone got a question to it? Okay.
Um, Garrett.
Yes.
I think you're gonna have to change the wording in the H. Uh, but appeal to a big decision. You're gonna have to change the city council to planning commission there. That sentence.
Okay, yeah, I see. Okay. Yeah, but major tree removal permits will be a. City. It will be a planning commission decision. Um, that's appealable to the city council. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything else in this ordinance they want to discuss? Chad?
Sure. I think we got, I mistaken.
I I noticed that, and that's why I asked you. Specific question.
Putting in some. No, I I think that we have covered everything that we we need to cover. And I think we're ready to put and make some changes to the ordinance nine four two and. Bring that back to the council. And I think we got a good working document here. That even if we go into act and and it doesn't work, we can come back and make some minor changes. Um, but from a staff's perspective of how we're going to. Organize and administrate this thing is is doable. Now, we haven't talked. And I don't know that it's appropriate at this moment yet, but staff will score this. In a way to take a look at what the costs involved are in time and effort. And then during the budget process, we'll look at. Suggesting some. Permit themes. That would help us cover some of these expenses.
And the. For the major, for the major.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I've got, yeah, so I've got some basic information I can hand out to you to get you thinking about it. It's what we're gonna use to kind of think about it. Um, for the different sections of this, but I haven't considered just the little changes that we've made here, so I'll wait to give that to you until we do.
Okay.
I have a question about enforcement. Who's going to enforce this on, um, Sundays, Saturdays? During the day?
Well, it's gonna be up to the building official, Angelina and myself. Um, which we're not typically on the weekends. So if we had an issue on weekends, it would be almost enforcement. With a a fine in court day, you know, okay, you did this, you didn't have permission, and Monday morning we figured it out. Um, currently, we have, if there's a call for illegal work being done, somebody calls. Seaside dispatch, they have a call list and they know who to call, so even my name is on that. Occasionally, I'll check those out. There's been a few weekends lately I've been doing that for construction work hours. So we don't have an employee that we decide that this, this does live in the zone code. So it's not within the municipal code. Which means it's not in the purview of the police department. To to monitor this because it's a land use issue, not a municipal issue, municipal code issue. So until then, there's still some challenges there for the city of Gerhard and the size of our team. But I think this will take care of most of the issues.
Any other questions?
I I had one thing I wanted to bring up, if it's all right. Um, just that we have a pretty tight turnaround to get on your November. Agenda, and so, uh, in terms of. Like Peter's input, particularly, we talked about that on right of way responsibilities. That input might come. On the draft revised ordinance, like after the packets are prepared, like we, we might not have time for that coordination. In the next. Couple days, right? But, um. If you, we we can, we can, we can bring it back to your meeting in November. Uh, at this point, if you want us to get it in that soon.
Yes.
Okay. Great.
All right, is that it? Endurement.
Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you, Garrett. And I hope everything's better for you out there in that. Interland.
Yeah, every, everything's, everything's getting better and getting more and more normal slowly but surely. Thank you.